Thank you. We are back in session. My fifth speaker is Mr. Mike Davis.
Since how I didn't, oh, excuse me, Mike Davis, 1601 Forest Highlands Court. Since how I didn't talk with Mr. Boone, evidently I'm irrational. So I'll go from there. This is not right. This is-
Could you move over just a step to get closer to the microphone? Thank you.
This is a democracy. You have 375 people sign a petition, okay? That's the majority. You five, you can overrule that 375, so it's not a democracy. The Bible tells me it's a sin to tell a lie. I had the worst night that I can remember trying to sleep last night. I was picturing your faces and y'all saying, yes, yes, yes. I couldn't sleep. I'm serious. It would be a sin for me to tell you a lie. I couldn't sleep because all of y'all were going to vote yes. I have not talked to one person who said they would have moved to where they live now if they known the motel was going to be put there. I wanted to buy some scales, justice scales. You know, you've seen the justice scales, okay? And they said it's about money. It is about money. You have the justice scales. You have a hotel. You have other developments. And see how far it goes down? Justice is up here, but the weight of money, it's got this scale way down here. It's way out of kilter. It's wrong. I know you might say this is irrational, but this is how I felt last night when I was laying in bed, and I told you I couldn't sleep. There is a war going on now in the Ukraine, okay? This man, with the few people backing him, wants to go and take this land and does what he wants to with it. That's what's happened to our land. You're killing our dreams. Let me read this to you. For what profit is it to a man if he gains the whole world and loses his own soul? Or what will a man give in exchange for his soul? I hope it's not inappropriate, but I'd like to ask you a question, and you can show me by hand if you would. If y'all vote yes for this, how many will y'all come and help me and my wife move? Because that's what I'll do. I'll remember your faces tonight in my dreams. Thank you.
My sixth speaker is Mr. Gene Sostakowski.
Very good.
My wife is Polish, so.
My name is Gene Sostakowski, and I live at 1707 Ken Lake Lane. As a resident of one of the communities surrounding this proposed development, I have a lot of concerns that our property values going down if this rezoning application is approved. Mr. Boone has addressed our concerns about property value reductions previously by stating, "I have seen hundreds of projects like this, and it's never the case." I would like to request the list of multiple developments from Mr. Boone that had an established residential neighborhood with R1 zoning around it, where zoning was changed to R3 and C2 zoning, so a hotel and townhome could be built in the middle of hundreds of surrounding single-family homes without affecting property values or traffic. I doubt as he has any examples of that. A development such as this one would most certainly affect our property values. The property next to the park and ride just increased their price by $200,000 on Monday in anticipation of your approval of a C2 rating tonight. They will expect an easy change to the rest of Edgebrook to a C2, resulting in Edgebrook being all commercial property and further reducing the property value of our development. We have no doubt Mr. Boone will do an excellent job of building the townhomes, but he has no record, I know, of commercial building. However, we have not heard anything specific on the square footage of the townhomes. What will that be? The selling price, he doesn't know yet. Obviously, the lower end range that he has spoken about of 250 would most certainly affect our home values. Mr. Boone has also said that he will build these townhomes and not rent out, but sell them. What would stop him from having another builder build those townhouses on his property, like is being done in Ruslin Farms? Then we would not know what the potential size or quality would end up being, nor the further effect it would have upon our property values. Adding a profit, assuring us that he will be the only builder of townhomes would be the only way to ensure this. When discussing this proposed rezoning at the recent Planning Commission meeting, Troy Henderson said, "I don't see this as a bad use of land." He may not, and you may agree. However, neither he nor any of you will have to suffer from the consequences of your decision on this rezoning application on a daily basis, like my neighbors, and I most certainly will if you vote to approve this rezoning. Mr. Boone has suggested that the hotel would support our neighborhoods by offering a location for visiting relatives to stay in addition to space for sporting goods. Currently, there are 11 hotels within a three-mile radius and 29 in less than a five-mile radius of this property. A hotel is not needed here. If Mr. Boone is concerned about residents of single-family homes having a place for guests to stay, he could build a hotel and townhomes near his development at Fairway Forest. They might be able to use a hotel since there are only two within a three-mile radius that I'm aware of, and there are hundreds more homes in that area than there are here. In conclusion, how can you allow commercial zoning in an area designated as neighborhood conservation according to the comprehensive plan? This proposed rezoning is not compatible with the comprehensive plan. You must therefore vote no to the rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Kevin Connolly.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Connolly. I live at 1555 Old Course Lane in the Fairways Two subdivision. I'd like to discuss again the traffic issues and what we consider faulty traffic counts done by both Balzer and VDOT. According to archived weather history, there was a quarter inch of rain when Balzer and Associates conducted their traffic study on September 21, 2021. Several engineering firms we've spoken to about this say they try to reschedule their traffic studies when there is rain. VDOT's own instruction guide for traffic studies states to avoid days with inclement weather. I feel the study was flawed because of this and provided inaccurate traffic counts due to the rain that day. This is important since VDOT has based their recommendation that no turn lanes or tapers are warranted by the proposed development based in part on this traffic study conducted by Balzer. And I was thinking, once they started mentioning the golf club, the golf course there, rain had an effect on golfers that day, so I mean, you're not getting it a good traffic count. Additionally, at the March meeting, Ryan Blevins with VDOT was asked by one of my neighbors if the traffic study numbers used in this rezoning app were low due to the effects of COVID on traffic. Mr. Blevins admitted that the traffic counts were a little low because of the effects COVID did have on traffic, and because of that, he went on to add, "Pre-COVID traffic counts were used." However, if you look at the traffic information from the rezoning application, there is nothing but VDOT's 2020 traffic counts and Balzer's September 21, 2021 traffic turning figures, and no specific date or month was given for the 2020 study done by VDOT. Please note, there are no pre-COVID 2019 VDOT traffic counts included anywhere in the application. According to Mr. Blevins, VDOT found Balzer's numbers acceptable, and if the pre-COVID 2019 traffic counts for Edgebrook Road and Mountain Heights Lane were higher, shouldn't they have been used and included in the rezoning application and adjusted to include annual rate increases from 2019 to the time of the study? Roanoke County residents deserve the right to have the most accurate traffic counts analyzed when there's a rezoning request of this magnitude. At the Planning Commission, Mr. Blevins and Mr. Burns both stated the numbers weren't that far off. If you remember back to the beginning of COVID, a number of large car insurance companies like State Farm gave partial premium refunds back to their insured customers because they were driving a lot less and they had fewer claims. People were no longer commuting to work as much and staying, working at home. Traffic must have been impacted heavily for that to occur, yet for some reason were repeatedly told that the COVID traffic counts were acceptable, and we just had to have blind faith. Our community wants accurate numbers used when a decision this important is made. We're requesting that all decisions be postponed until a new traffic study is completed on a rain-free day, along with an additional year of traffic growth rate factored into the traffic counts, since all the previous data was based on construction beginning in 2021, not 2022. If you do not find that action appropriate, I urge you to vote no tonight as rezoning will result in a substantial detriment to our community. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Kim Baskett.
Baskett. Hi, I'm Kim Baskett. I live at 1628 Ford Forest Highlands Court in Fairways Two. And I want to talk a little bit more about the anticipated traffic issues that were brought up at the Planning Commission meeting and that this proposed rezoning will bring to our neighborhoods. The previous planned Section Three of the Fairways that had 51 single-family homes would have increased vehicles per day by only 30%. Compare that to the vehicles per day increase of 73% from the 80 townhomes and the hotel. The numbers are on your handout. That is a significant increase. Additionally, if this rezoning is approved, eventually something more than the simple existing stop sign that is currently there will be required at the intersection of Thomas Memorial Drive and Mountain Heights Road due to future traffic issues. Specifically, what type of future road improvements at this intersection could VDOT implement here? Well, as previously stated by Mr. Blevins of VDOT at the March Community Meeting, no traffic light can ever be placed at this intersection because of the close proximity to I-81's ingress/egress. The entrance ramp to I-81 South is less than one-tenth of a mile from this intersection. According to Mr. Blevins, the only future solution to the inevitable traffic problem that will occur at this intersection if rezoning is granted would be one of the following three options. The first option would be an R-cut, which is a restricted cross-in U-turn, which means no left turn out onto Thompson Memorial from either Mountain Heights Drive or from Deborah Lane, which is located on the other side of Thompson Memorial Drive. Second option, a closed crossover, which is a right in, right out, once again eliminating left-hand turns. Or the third option would be a reduced phase signal. All of these solutions sound like they would only add more restrictive traffic control in an area that already has I-81 ingress/egress, a narrowing of two lanes down to one on Thompson Memorial Drive, which I've noticed can be pretty dangerous there with people flying off I-81 coming from Salem as you approach the park and ride, and a roundabout at the next intersection down the road at Kataba Valley Road and Thompson Memorial Drive. We also must not forget about the wide turns that the smart buses make coming from or going to the park and ride 12 times a day. Adding additional traffic produced by 80 townhomes and an 85-room hotel sounds like a traffic nightmare. I would like to request that no decision be made on this rezoning tonight until the applicant conducts a new traffic study and submits it for review. If you do not find that action appropriate, I urge you to vote no to the rezoning of this property as it will result in a substantial detriment to our community. And I have a couple other things. One is that I'm going to reiterate with some of my neighbors have said, "If this was being proposed near you, would you want this in your neighborhood, or would you be up here fighting as we are?" That's my first question. The second note I want to add is we just moved in in December of this past year, and as my neighbor previously said, we would have had second thoughts if we knew a hotel was going to be put on that property. So thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next speaker I have on my list is Donna Copenhaver.
Good evening. My name is Donna Copenhaver, and I live at 1643 Forest Highlands Court in Fairways Two. Tonight, I will be addressing the C2 zoning request for the hotel. This rezoning application states that Edgebrook Park supports the residents of the surrounding communities. I'm not sure how any of this rezoning would support our neighborhoods. On the contrary, if the C2 rezoning is granted for a hotel to be built, we anticipate an increase in criminal activity in our neighborhoods. This proposed hotel will facilitate break-ins, drug dealings, and sex trafficking in our neighborhoods by bringing lots of people from out of the area off of Interstate 81. The hotel, along with the park and ride, will be a haven for sex trafficking. What a mistake these two together will be. Just yesterday, federal officials initiated steps to seize a county motel which had been home to a known drug trafficker and a center for sex trafficking. The news story stated the county police had responded to over 1,100 calls to this motel in the last three years. This type of activity is happening already in the county. Sergeant Shidester, Roanoke County Police Motel Task Force, says that suspicious activity is already happening at the park and ride related to sex trafficking, and that a hotel across the street from that would increase such activity, especially since it will be right off of I-81. Sergeant Shidester, who is very familiar with the location of this proposed hotel, immediately commented on how the location is set back from I-81 and how it is kind of isolated in a quiet little place, which could offer more seclusion for criminal activity. Hotels and motels are their top police call producers every month in the county police department besides calls to the two-county Walmarts, according to Brittany Money, who is a crime analyst for Roanoke County Police. She said there are five hotels and motels in the Thurlane Road area, each averaging between 2.6 and 29 calls per month. Sergeant Shidester said that the older ones tend to get run down and sometimes actually turn into long-term housing where drug use is a frequent problem. We have no guarantee of what would end up here 10 to 15 years from now when the property becomes rundown and potentially sold. A majority of the over 300 surrounding residents that signed our petition to deny Mr. Boone's rezoning request wrote in either "no hotel" or "no commercial." I urge you, please, to vote no to this C2 rezoning request, as it will be a detriment- excuse me, it will be a detriment to our community, detriment to our community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Stas Mavridis.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Stas Mavridis, and I live on Old Course Lane, Fairways Two Development. I would like to continue with some other areas of concern containing this rezoning application. And I just want to say right off, we are not in principle opposed to diverse housing. It could be a very good thing. This is all, the beef is with the rezoning for the hotel. Mr. Boone's application states the request for rezoning would offer services to many county residents not available in close proximity to home. Called supportive services. If this is a reference to the hotel, then it is simply not true. Exit 141 offers four hotels, the availability of 370 total rooms. Exit 137 offers seven hotels away from our neighborhoods. Mr. Boone repeatedly says that our homes come first typically in an area, then businesses follow because the homeowners want to be close to things. How many homeowners actually want or need a hotel in their backyard? I'm pretty sure prospective homebuyers do not look for that service on house hunting. According to Mr. Thompson, the area designated as core in this parcel was changed from transition on the 1998 comprehensive plan to core on the 2005 comprehensive plan. Mr. Boone's property rights aside, what about the property rights of us, the neighboring single-family homeowners? Have we not any property rights relating to zoning? The piece of property where the commercial zoning is being requested is still partially in neighborhood conservation and not in full compliance with the comprehensive plan, even though Planning told us and Planning Commissioners three weeks ago reiterated that it was in full compliance with regard to neighborhood conservation. This property is surrounded by single-family homes. Therefore, it makes most sense from a planning perspective to maintain the current R1 zoning for this piece of property so the natural expansion of the existing development pattern can be preserved. Currently, Roanoke County- Currently, Roanoke County Planning is examining zoning mistakes of the past with 419 frontage development plan. The major goal of this plan, from my understanding, is to provide a framework for any new development by respecting the existing land uses and taking measures to ensure land-use compatibility to prevent the "blight of the commercial strip," so common to suburban corridors, end quote. That type of blight is exactly what you will see being created here if you approve this rezoning by ignoring our existing land-use patterns and allowing commercial zoning in the middle of residential. And so, for the reasons I've stated, and that everyone else before me has stated, this proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan, and not in good zoning practice, and will result in substantial detriment to our community. Therefore, you must, and we request, please, follow your own guidelines in this regard and vote no to the C2 or commercial rezoning application. Thank you for your time.
My next speaker is Mr. John Center.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is John Center, and I live at 1502 Old Course Lane in Salem. Tonight, I would like to present some concerns that my neighbors and I have with statements made in Mr. Boone's rezoning application for Edgebrook Park. I apologize in advance, because some of the stuff I'm going to say, you've heard, and it won't be as awesome, but I think it's important. Mr. Boone's application states that the rezoning from R1 to R3 will allow the building of townhomes to, and I quote, "help address the significant shortage of new housing in Roanoke County." Please note that Section Three of Fairways, which could have been developed but was never completed, would have contributed approximately 51 new single-family homes, according to the site sign that was there for years and only removed March of this year. In another part of the application, it states that Edgewood Park will be an efficient, attractive, and compatible use of property. In September 6, Roanoke Times article, Mr. Boone is quoted as saying that his affordable townhomes could sell between $250,000 and $400,000. With those price ranges, there is still no assurance that Mr. Boone's proposed townhomes will be anywhere comparable to our existing single-family homes, either in price or in quality. Nor can Mr. Boone predict with any certainty the negative impact C2 or R3 zoning will have on our home prices. Mr. Boone repeatedly stated at the Planning Commission meeting that neither he nor Joe Thomas can find anyone interested in purchasing a single-family home located behind the park-and-ride. I suspect that they would have the same results if they had canvassed potential homeowners to see if there was any interest in purchasing a townhome located behind a park-and-ride, I-81, or either side or behind a large four-story hotel. No doubt, Mr. Boone would like to rezone a majority of this property to R3 to maximize the profits under the guise of affordable housing, while trying to convince us that this is the only marketable development for this site, with a callous disregard to already existing R1 zoning and the residents that will be negatively impacted by this proposed rezoning. Finally, the recent rezoning application states that material revisions to the initial plan of development were made following the March Community Meeting to address the legitimate concerns of the residents who attended. There were no material concessions made. The medical buildings were eliminated from the original project to, in order to move the hotel from the neighborhood conservation, but the relocation is still clouded, as a portion of the parking lot and a corner of the hotel remain in the neighborhood conservation area. Let me be clear, the commercial rezoning of R1 property has always been the most concerning part of the proposal for a majority of the surrounding residents, and I'm confident it would be the same position that residents along Huntington Hills, or Fox Red Road, or anybody here that has a single-family home in an R1 development that has a townhome or a hotel moving beside it. Because what's going to happen? Your property's going to go down in value. And it is about money, because most of the people here that lived in these homes have put their life savings into making that home maybe their final home. I know most of the people in our neighborhood have. And I just say, it needs to stop here. Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors, I urge you to vote no to Mr. Boone's rezoning request, and as is said before, because it will result in a substantial detriment to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Larry Schaus.
I'm Larry Schaus. I live at 1536 Old Course Lane. My property happens to back up to one of the buffered areas for this project. First, before I start anything, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. I like the process that's in place here, where we can bring issues before the board and have it aired out, and I thank you for that. I've been a homeowner in Fairways Two for the last 14 years. And I've served as a member of the advisory committee that the developer, Joe Thomas, put together for approximately nine years. And I've also served on the Board of Directors for our HOA. I say this only because I have a history of knowing where things have progressed over the course of the 14 years that I have lived here. I'd like to take a few moments to just address the change and the history. When I purchased my property in 2008, I was told by my builder, Brad Graham of Graham Thomas Builders, that there would be nothing built directly behind my property. I beg to differ now, because this project will be directly behind my property. The creek that runs down through that property, I was told at the time that I was standing in my future backyard, that it was a protected area, and it would not be any building in that area. Now we know. The -- move forward a few more years. I was at an advisory meeting with Joe Thomas, and he brought forward what his plans were for that development. And indeed, he was planning to build another section of homes along the creek area. At that time, he said, "I will probably have to shorten the -- or cut the footprint of the homes at the entrance, because it's going to be right across from the park-and-ride," and that would probably be an obvious reason why. But he said, "As we move back on that property, we will increase the size of the homes and the cost value of those homes." Some months later, a sign was erected on the site that showed 50 homes coming into that area. And that sign stayed there until the course of what's happening now came about. All of a sudden, we learned that the rumblings that Mr. Thomas had sold the property to Mr. Boone, and that there was going to be a commercial property put in place. This brings us to where we're at. You've already heard, you know it well, we're asking that we not rezone this property to commercial, allow commercial. The 60 townhomes or 80 townhomes, that number keeps getting bounced around, they're the lesser of the evils here, in my opinion. Mr. Boone's project, the price points of the townhomes seem to be somewhat fluid. He can't -- we can't get him to nail down exactly what it is that he's going to charge. We've heard from multiple people, including Mr. Thomas, that, you know, we're people that do not like change, that we're being characterized as whiny butts to some degree. Joe didn't say that. But we're just a group of people that do not want the intrusion of commercialism into our neighborhood. I think what you're hearing tonight is very passionate individuals about our community. I'm going to stop, because I know my time is over. I will close with this one thought. It's common for each of us to resist change. That's human nature. Anytime that we feel strongly or see an unneeded thing being pushed toward us or threatens our peaceful existence, I'll leave you with a thought here. The only person that I can truly say enjoys change is a baby with a dirty diaper. And I leave you with that stinky thought, because this project stinks to those of us that live around it. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that what you hear tonight does not fall on deaf ears.
Thank you. My next speaker is Dr. Ken Bunning. And if you can follow that.
Good evening. I am Ken Bunning. My wife and I live at Fairways Two, 1514 Kinlock Lane in Hanging Rock. I am a retired Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel, and after 20 years military service, I went to medical school and became a surgeon. Since retirement, I have been active in local search and rescue, and on the Appalachian Trail, not only hiking, but maintaining, et cetera. And I have a deep and abiding love for our community. I am speaking tonight in the hope of averting what I and many here tonight consider unnecessary and unwanted zoning change, which will destroy the character of this portion of our county. This is not simply resistance to change. The proposed development will decrease our property values, introduce crime into what I'm sure you will acknowledge, our housing areas that are virtually crime-free, and create a tremendous increase in traffic on a small county road. How many of you have seen the traffic blocked as a bus attempts to turn in or out of the Trucks have an equally difficult and dangerous time negotiating the intersections, and there are two intersections. One is Edgebrook, and then the other is where it meets 311. The distance between where the entrance to this development is proposed and that stop sign is approximately four car lengths. So put those facts together, and you're going to have a nightmare there. Finally, the proposed southwestern entrance to the townhouses is built on a blind hill that will undoubtedly produce fatal collisions. If you're coming from Red Lane towards the park-and-ride, you go over that hill, you have no idea what's on the other side of that hill. Anybody pulling out could be T-boned. How many of you have personally gone out and looked at this proposed disaster in the We are in favor of progress and believe allowing development according to the current county plan and zoning would produce the progress without destroying why we chose to live here. Please do not permit the proposed rezoning. The property in question was slated for development in keeping with the current zoning until the developer discovered that our hills are more than skin-deep. After recognizing that, he would have increased costs dealing with the geology, he sold it to another developer, who has continued to back this -- and has continued to back this new developer at the cost to our community. The Board of Supervisors was elected to guide the county. We elected you, in part, to protect our interests. In this case, I ask that you listen to your constituents, the people who live in the affected area, and please do the right thing, deny this zoning change. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tap Kaseke.
My name is Tap Kaseke. I live on Connors Run. I'm really against this thing, because, I mean, me and my wife moved into the area very young, and you know what it's like when you bring in all this development, hotels, you know, there's a lot of activity, bringing in more attention, that's unnecessary. As it stands right now, that land is vacant. Nobody really cares about it, because there's nothing there. Once you bring something there, you sort of bring in more attention, you know, like the activity that we're seeing at the other hotels, which is drug activity, and all the unnecessary stuff. You know, it's a safe environment, it's been safe, and I believe that, you know, bringing in all this other stuff is going to make it unsafe for everybody that's living there. You know, as it stands right now, you know, you can leave your garage open, and without fear of, you know, somebody walking in there and doing anything to it. But, you know, as it stands with these guys wanting to do, you know, their development and making the changes that they want to do, you're attracting more people that are going to work on the property and explore what's around the area, which is bringing the attention that's going to cause all the unnecessary traffic, you know, per se, which is crime, the vehicles, and, you know, not to mention the roads that have to be fixed. We all see how long it's taken to fix the I-81 right now. It's still in progress. It's not an overnight thing. You know, we will have to deal with it. You won't have to deal with it, because you don't live there. We do. And, you know, he's talking about it as, "Oh yeah, we'll come in and do all of this stuff," but he's not going to have to live there. You know, when we have the issue of the traffic, we can't get out, we can't get to work on time, because, you know, somebody from the hotel, you know, has had an accident there, they can't leave, you know, they have to wait for the police, you know, there is no room for any development of this nature in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Ron Buckley.
Good evening, and thank you for your time in advance. My name is Ron Buckley. I'm a resident of the Fairways Two at Hanging Rock, and I'm going to have a very informal presentation tonight. A lot of my thunder has already been taken by previous speakers. You've heard several of them addressing the concerns of this proposal. My concerns are the hotel, and how it will be detrimental to the residents in the surrounding communities. There's four residential communities that surround this area where this hotel is being proposed, and nobody that's spoken tonight, not even Mr. Boone, has made a statement to say how adding a hotel is going to be something favorable to those residents around there. There's nothing favorable about a hotel being in your backyard. I mean, that's just a fact. I'm not going to get into the added crime, the added traffic that's already been addressed, you all have heard enough of that, but I do want to bring up a couple of points. What does this bring for the county? Obviously, it brings additional revenue, I understand that, but the taxpayers that live in those houses that surround where this hotel is being proposed, they pay taxes too. And they bought those homes with the intention that they were going to be in a residential community and not have a hotel in their backyard. And I think their tax dollars should be respected as you go forward with your considerations tonight. There's been talk about who benefits -- additional benefits that the county or whatever might have from this hotel. I think Mr. Boone talked about sporting events, things like that, where we need added rooms on special occasions. That may well be the case, but I think it's been well documented that the facts of hotel occupancy in Roanoke are below what is required for us to have another hotel. And if we do need another hotel, if you feel that it's -- another hotel is what's proper for the county, all you have to do is go one mile north to exit 141. There's three hotels already up there. There's a 10.2 acre, 10.25 acre plot of land commercially zoned, available right there across the street from it, within a spitting distance of I-81, that you could build several nice hotels on. Rather than disrupting our neighborhood right here, go one mile up the road and build as many hotels as you can fit in that 10.25 acres. Finally, what I'd like to say tonight, you've heard everybody talking about how this proposal is detrimental to our community. Well, I want to direct your attention to your sample motions I think that you all will look at tonight as you go to vote on this. Number one, under motions to approve, I think -- well, first, substantial detriment is addressed in number three to the community, all right? It will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I think several people have said that it would be substantially detrimental to the community. Number one in that motion to approve, I don't think is properly even addressed, because number one... number one, it says the proposed rezoning for the townhomes is not in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan's future land use designation accord. Now, that's a partial statement of what is in there. But there again, it doesn't meet that requirement. If you look at, under motion to deny, one, it's inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adoptive comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, or will result in substantial detriment to the community. I think you have both there, but you certainly have one, and I urge you to vote against this proposal. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Barbara Miller Scott.
I'm going to say ditto, except for the safety of our children, our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren. There is not going to be safety there. I've stood there for a week watching the traffic. I can't come up there and come upstairs.
Thank you. Next speaker is Richard Atkins.
My name is Richard Atkins. I live at 1817 North Road, and that's on the backside of most all of what's going on here. It's actually more towards the end of Red Lane, but I still feel like this kind of affects me and my property. And I don't know what I could add to anything that anybody said here tonight. Basically, I agree with them 100%. And I would respectfully ask you all to vote against this rezoning. I think it's bad. If a man needs to build something, build more houses. He said we were short on them, so build more houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lou McClung.
Good evening. My name is Lou McClung. I live at 1486 Hollybrook Road, very close to this development. I've been there for 62 years, even though I'm 80. Sorry, I've had 12 children, this is what it does to you, makes you look. A lot of talk tonight is about keeping it as an R1. I can promise you that change will come. It will be a commercial development one day. If change didn't happen, then a lot of people wouldn't be here tonight because their homes wouldn't be there, because Ripley wouldn't have been put in to allow an access to their homes. Thank goodness for Joe Senior's foresight to develop Edgebrook and put the golf course in there so that those that do live up there don't have to go down Red Lane, Hawthorne High, Cleveland, and then on Thompson Memorial to get to the interstate that they have the pleasure of listening to all night, as I do. Typically, the adage is to fear the unknown. This is the known, and it's a pretty handsome project, as projects go, that combine this type of development. You know, because it'll be development, I fear a gas station, I fear a truck stop, I fear a Walgreens or a Sheetz, or I fear a poorly developed neighborhood. I happen to own 14 acres on the other side of the interstate in Salem, and we had a beautiful development put together. It was shot down by all the people who said, well, just not in my backyard. And so now I have, because capitalism is apparently a crime now, I have been forced to exercise my altruism and put in as many Section 8 homes as I can build in there because I do believe in helping the marginal in society. And that would be, of course, a by right development. So I do think that this is a handsome development. And instead of saying, you know, speculative items like our house's value is going to go down, nobody can prove that. In fact, it'll probably go up, and then there'll be fussing about tax increases. But let's think about how we can embrace this project. Let's think about, you know, having your family in for Thanksgiving, but having them near you, but not next to you, if you know what I'm saying. I've got some. And having your children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren sell lemonade during the heavy traffic days of the hooky games. So, now, that may not be allowed by a licensure, but those are my thoughts, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Joe Thomas.
Thank you. My name is Joe Thomas. I live at 6618 Campbell Drive. And I made some prepared notes here, and I got my glasses on, but I got a shot in my eye today, and I'm not seeing very well, so I apologize if I make a few things here. Larry, I appreciate you clarifying that. I would never call you. One thing, first of all, I did have a letter from another resident who could not be here tonight. He asked me if I would read it in his absence. His name is Nick Thomas, no relation to me. I did build his house. He lives at 1624 Valhalla Court at Fairways at Hanging Rock, Section 1. I've been a resident of Fairways 1 since 2005 and have lived in Roanoke County since 1984. Full disclosure, Alexander Boone is a customer of the company I work for. I do not know anything about the hotel industry, but I do know that Lee Wilhelm, Chairman of the Virginia's, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, thinks we need more hotels in the Roanoke Valley to serve our tourism initiative. The decision to build a hotel rests with the developer and owner if it is approved. There are many examples of commercial development throughout the Roanoke Valley adjacent or near residential neighborhoods. One could argue that done correctly, the commercial development enhances the neighborhood. Also, I know the type of product that Alexander Boone builds. It is done thoughtfully and with a high degree of quality. Thank you, Nick Thomas. Couple things. My name's been thrown around here a lot tonight, so I had a lot of different comments prepared, but I cut it way back because I wanted to be under the three minutes. And I know that we're not really telling anybody to sit down, so if I ramble on, feel free to tell me to sit down, so. I've been involved in the development of the community surrounding this property since the 1980s. We developed and built Hanging Rock Golf Club, which we've all heard and talked about. Ma'am?
That's the first I've ever heard of any issues there. And we're certainly trying to look into it, but, you know, we don't irritate a whole golf course with wells, so I just want you to know it's only used at certain times.
It was a fight to get the golf course approved as well. We went through it, and part of why Edgebrook Road was built was that was a requirement because of the complaints about traffic. We had to extend Edgebrook Road. It used to dead-end right there at Tommy Barber's house. We built Edgebrook Road up through there, which enabled the Fairways at Hanging Rock, Sections 1 and 2, which is where a lot of the folks here tonight have spoken. It wouldn't even been there if we hadn't done the golf course. That's why we had to build Edgebrook Road, to help ease that traffic, to give access over to Mountain Heights and subsequently Thompson Memorial. Just a little bit of history lesson there. We later developed Fairways at Hanging Rock Sections 1 and 2. I'm very proud of those subdivisions. I don't know that I've ever been more proud than I am tonight because, obviously, the folks who built there and the homes that we built, they're proud of where they live and they love their community, and hopefully, that's a testimony to what we did accomplish when we built those houses there. As you can imagine, it's a little bit difficult sometimes. These people are my friends, they're my customers, they play golf on my golf course, so I just want to try to explain a lot of the things that happened here tonight, if you give me the time. When I owned the property, we did originally plan to put new paddy homes there that were proposed to be similar to the ones at Fairways 1 and Fairways Section 2. And this is one thing I want everybody to understand. These are two different pieces of property, and I was probably naive when we developed it. We started meeting with people, and we met with people when we did Fairways 1 and 2. Everybody was so excited. I want this house on the golf course. I want this one over here. I want this one there. It was a very exciting thing. When I started meeting with people at this section, and we met with them prior to construction, of course, not one person wanted to be there. They said, I can't be here, it's right beside the park and ride. We're sitting here looking at the interstate. You know, maybe when you get on back to the backside, you know, when you get there, you know, give me a call. Not one person was excited about living right there in a home comparable to what we had been building. It was a big letdown for me because I was real proud of what we had done and what we had accomplished, and those were successful properties. But not one person wanted to be there. They couldn't stand to be that close to the park and ride and the exit ramp of Interstate 81. You know, this wasn't a view of a golf course and woods and surrounding things that all these other houses had. It was a view, and you were located right beside the park and ride, and a view of an interstate. It was evident to me that people would not pay anywhere near the same amount for a home that's located 100 yards from a park and ride in a busy interstate as they would for a home that sits adjacent to the golf course. If we were going to build single-family homes here, they were going to have to be much less expensive, and we were going to have to squeeze as many of them in there as we possibly could. The grading and land clearing was just too extensive, too expensive. I mean, it was going to be an extensive operation. It wouldn't have these buffers that we're talking about in this project. We postponed our development plans even after spending countless hours seeking alternatives, and I spent probably close to $100,000 with my friends, Balls, or any of these other folks trying to figure out what to do here. After this careful, expensive, and extensive deliberation, it became apparent that we needed a better plan that included a buffer between the residential construction and the park and ride. I didn't know too much about commercial development, other than doing a bunch of grading for them and things like that, so I approached Alexander Boone, who I felt was the best, most knowledgeable, most honest developer in the valley, to give me some ideas. Alexander ended up buying the property, and he's carefully developed a plan that makes sense from a development perspective. It provides a need for the overall community. We can sit here and debate hotels all the time. I'm telling you what Nick says, the director of Virginia's Blue Ridge says. Lee Wilhelm told me, before the pandemic, there were 11 hotels slated to be built in the Roanoke area. There's that much of a need for hotels here, according to Virginia's Blue Ridge.
Mr. Thomas, could you wrap it up? You're running way over.
Additionally, having a development in a quality hotel close proximity to our golf course would also help generate additional play and revenue, and hopefully, open up other possibilities for our business. Since the golf course has been a driver for this community for over 30 years, anything that can be done to help provide additional revenue streams will help ensure the golf course's survivability and thereby preserve and enhance the property values for those homes in the neighborhood. Please note, I would never support anything that I believe would hurt this community, which is why I didn't want to squeeze that many single-family homes on this piece of property. I was here 35 years ago when we started developing it. I care about the community, I've invested most of my adult life here. It can't support homes like those on the golf course in Hangar Rock Estates. They're different pieces of property, and you just can't compare them. One thing that I want to say, the last thing that I wanted to say was, I've always said that smart development does not harm property values, it enhances them. And this is why I sold it to someone who knows how to develop that type of property. Do it well, and do it in a manner that we can all be proud of when it's complete. Thank you so much.
My final speaker is Mr. Mike Arthur.
Good evening. How are you doing? My name is Mike Arthur. I live at 2235 River Oaks Drive in Roanoke County. After attending the zoning board meeting September 6, I felt compelled to respond to statements and accusations tossed around there, so thank you for the opportunity to do so here tonight. I've been around the building industry the bulk of my career here in the valley and in the region, and I've known Alexander for quite a good while. And I challenge anyone to find an example of anything other than quality workmanship and attention to the detail of his development to the area that he has developed. No one should expect anything less here. Alexander Boone is one of the good guys in the building industry. Now, to me, that's another sound reason, just to grant yes on this proposal. Now, I live in the county about two miles, by the way the crow flies, from the development in question. And in my humble opinion, when all is said and done, I'm going to be impacted about as much as the people in this adjacent neighborhood, which I feel is very little. But, you know, and let me reiterate, there are hundreds of residential areas that are buffered or have adjacent commercial beside them. This is not unique. In fact, it's quite commonplace. As far as, you know, there's been a, I think in the news the other night, there was a hotel mentioned, and we've heard about people thinking about, well, there's going to be crime, and it's just going to breed crime, sex, drugs, rock and roll, or whatever. That motel was a night's inn on Thorough Lane Road out by the airport, for gosh sakes. This proposed hotel is just not the type of hotel that would attract drugs or sex trafficking as the residents have suggested. The upscale brand name proposed and this situational placement of the hotel is not similar to this type of motel which I just mentioned. There's definitely a need for a hotel, as referenced by, I think the other night, we saw that Salem was putting, I forget how many millions of dollars, to the Mooreyer complex, which already is used 230 days a year hosting 26 weekend tournaments. And they're putting that much money to draw even more sports tournaments and players around the county. Now, as Alexander had stated, the proposed development will preserve the beauty and the trees and other vegetation as buffers to the surrounding community. Based on his experience, this type of development will only increase the property values of the surrounding homes, and I genuinely believe that as well. And one last question, if you can't put a hotel across from a park and ride beside an interstate and in the designated core by the comprehensive plan, then where can you put one? So I urge you to pass this resolution, as it is the best thing for the community and for Roanoke County, and again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I have no more speakers listed. Madam Clerk, do you have anything else?
No, sir, I do not.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any questions of anyone? Yes, sir. Mr. Peters.
So I would like to, if I could, get a clarification on the traffic count. I don't know if it needs to be from Mr. Blevins.
Mr. Blevins?
Mr. Boone, or someone. Or maybe all the above.
Chris Burns with Ballsrin Associates. So I was wondering if we could talk about traffic tonight?
Well, they brought up two different things. They brought up the 2020 and then September 21 of 2021.
Yes, sir. I also heard rain mentioned, so I wanted to address that as well. So first off, the weather conditions. I don't remember the exact weather conditions on that day. I believe, in talking to Brian, I believe that it rained in the afternoon. Generally speaking, you know, we do numerous traffic studies per year. We have a lot of experience with them. It's true that if you have inclement weather or days when school's not in session, things of that nature, it's very common to postpone traffic counts. We don't typically postpone traffic counts for just rain. Generally, people are still traveling as they normally would on those days. So that's that item. As far as the COVID question, it's a great question. We've dealt with that numerous times over the last few years. These traffic counts were performed on September 21 of 2021. And during that timeframe, this was a question that came up on every traffic study. There, I just want to make a point that there aren't any turning movement counts pre-COVID that I'm aware of that are available. There's generic- There's generic traffic data from the VDOT website. And so what our process was, as far as that's concerned, we performed the traffic counts. We compared those generally to the VDOT data that was available pre-COVID. These, the data seemed to match what we would have expected for typical travel patterns. And so in discussion of VDOT, we determined that we, we really didn't need to make any adjustments or, or try to go back in time. What we did do as a, as an additional safety factor, we used a four and a half percent growth rate per year to bring traffic to the development year, which is very high. Typically, that's half a percent to 1%, something like that. So through that process, that, those traffic volumes were increased by about 10%. In addition to that, I also want to make the point that a traffic study was also completed under the previous proposal with the medical offices with the same results. There weren't any traffic improvements needed under that proposal. So the current proposal reduces traffic in the peak hours by 25 to 30% from that original study, and so there's really no improvements needed as a result of the development. I'm sure that you'll want to confirm that with VDOT, but.
Any other questions on that?
And I'll, I'll add just, just one, one other thing. I know that that was mentioned, the 2020 counts. There are 2020 counts in the study. Those are the generic counts that Mr. Burns just mentioned. We have, we issue those counts every year. We do not count every road every year. If you look at those three sheets of paper in the study, and I think I explained this to myself, or Ashley explained them, I split so over the phone a couple of times, but if you look at that, those are growth numbers. If off to the right, there's a date of 2018, that's actually when the physical counts were taken, and they're grown to that date. So we don't actually reduce them generally. They're usually grown to that date. But as Mr. Burns just explained, they, we don't actually use those numbers, they're just more for comparison. For a development of this size, you just actually look at the peak hour counts, which is what they took in 2021, and kind of looking at those in comparison to what you'd expect, they were, they were acceptable for what we could see as far as, like, being a normal traffic data, traffic numbers, COVID or post-COVID or pre-COVID.
And then the only other comment that I would make, I know I asked a question earlier to Mr. Boone regarding the hotel and how he received his data versus what we had heard a few months ago. But I can also say that through the last few months, we've, we've heard the need for additional hotels. I know we were, as a board, talking about events over at Green Hill, and we know what's going on at Moyer, so I know there, there probably is a need out that way. But anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from Mr. Blevins or Mr. Burns? Mr. Blevins, we had a citizen comment, I believe, with respect to, I don't know what to call it. It's the, the other townhouse development, is you start to go around the curve, I think, I believe there's 15 units that were there, and the concern being, I think from Dr. Bunning, the blind curb and coming down the hill. And I remember when Martha Supervisor Hooker drove me around the community a couple months ago, I've seen a problem there. Can you talk about that?
Sure. And I'm sure Mr. Burns could also explain, too, but, I mean, this, I mean, the, the general location is conceptual on the plan. We have not done, and nor have they, I would assume, done a complete grading plan or, you know, an actual full development plan. As a part of the, if, if this is approved, as a part of the development review process through the county, through VDOT, we would look at that as a commercial entrance. All commercial entrances need to meet intersection site distance, which has a required site distance, looking to the left and the right, based on the speed limit of the roadway. We don't usually base it on operating speed. So I know that a lot of folks would tell you they drive faster than the speed limit. That's not a VDOT thing, that's a, that's a police and enforcement thing. But they look at it from to the left and right, and to left turns turning in. And if they can't make that, then, yes, there are some exceptions and some things, but they also have the option to grade to improve that site distance, or cut back vegetation, get site distance easements. I mean, there are ways to make it work. It may not work there, and, you know, I don't know if they've investigated it quite that far.
A second concern would be, another citizen spoke about the, the stacking or the queue when you, you come out on both roads. When you first come out, and then you have to make the right before you get to 311. And if you're looking at four cars stacking up, plus the parking ride traffic, that seems to me to be a problem. How does VDOT perceive that? Or, Mr. Burns, how do you perceive that?
I can speak to that a little bit. I'm not sure where four cars came from. I took some measurements, and I came up with seven cars at the Thompson Memorial Intersection. I came up with 12 cars at the Mountain Heights Intersection. But one of the things we look at in the traffic study is queuing, which is how far cars are, are backing up, and comparing those to what's available. And we didn't identify any issues with queuing based on the volumes that we had.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. North.
In 2019, I, I requested the allocating Regional Commission to do a regional housing study, and it came back in 2020 that we needed more housing in the region, but more, most importantly, in Roanoke County. Our young people today are leaving this valley, who went to Charlotte and other places because it's not affordable housing for them to begin their careers in this county. We are becoming a senior citizen community more and more every day. I don't have an objection to that, because I'm a senior citizen myself, and it's a great place to live, and don't laugh, you're going to be, too, one day. In fact, you already are. You're in the same Sunday School class.
Okay, that's enough. Move on, move on.
So with that said, we need more housing. I struggle with a hotel. I'm sitting here and listening tonight, and I have heard that it's going to be an upscale hotel. I believe that it will be similar to one on Plantation Road one day. I'm not sure the hotel's going to happen before the townhomes. I'd like to call these something else other than townhomes, because I really don't believe that they're really townhomes like I grew up seeing in my lifetime. This is a difficult decision. If this had been probably, I, I kind of weigh the townhomes as something, a higher priority than the hotel. But because it's one petition, you have to consider it all in one bowl. You can't look at it separately, which is not really something I'm proud to say I've got to make a decision on here tonight. But I will tell you this, from my experience many years ago with the Boone organization, they are a good organization, and I don't believe that Alexander Boone's going to put a hotel in there that's going to cause problems five years from now, or 10 or 20. Now, I know we are tainted with the news last night. It's a sad commentary, and I believe that efforts are going to be made to clean up that part of the industry that exists in our community today. We do need more housing. Salem's putting $27 million, if I heard right, in Moyer Complex. It's not going to be ready to 2024. This hotel probably won't be neither. The hotel's not going to be in that great of an eyesight of people that own homes around there. And listen, I, I probably wouldn't want that hotel in my backyard neither, but there's someplace along 460 where we need, over in the Hollands area, that I represent. And if it was a suitable hotel like is being proposed here, I would probably not object to it. I certainly wouldn't want it in my community, but if it's on 460, parallel to the community in the right place, I probably could support it. So this is a difficult decision, and I hear everything you all have said tonight, and I will tell you what I've told people in the Hunt Ridge area, where development's going on there by right. If everything's going to be all right, it's not going to result in anything detrimental in the long run. It's going to, it's going to be good, and it's going to help the community in Roanoke County. And so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant, of VDOT, of staff, or who want to debate it and start with the motion? You have questions?
I don't really have questions. I just have some commentary, but I don't know. Are we ready for that? Do we need to hear from any of the, anything else from the petitioner before I begin? We're ready to move on?
Move on.
Yep.
Move on.
I've got comments, too.
Do you want to make a motion first, and then have debate and comments?
I'd like to make my, I'd like to make my comments first, please, because it might make a difference in the way things are going. Well, I, I want to say that I have listened to, and I know you all have been on the property, you've all visited it, and I think I stand by my commentary that while Mr. Boone does very good work, I would not want a hotel in my backyard. And that's really where I'm standing firm. I think we've got, let's see, it's 85% approximately of the people in this community are retired. They've put a large investment in their homes, and I think it's our responsibility to be protecting those homes and their value, and, and not to forget that this home value is a substantial portion of our tax base. And so I, there is conundrum here, you know? Maybe we do need hotels. I just wouldn't want it in my backyard next to my house. And so I'm going, and I'm, I'm going to represent my people as I think I hear their concerns. You know, the, the beginning of the hotel phase, I see as it being great, I really do. I think it would be a good hotel. It's the deterioration over the years, and if it were sold to another entity where I could see that it could decline, and then it could become problematic. And that haunts me, thinking about that over the years. You know, I just, I want to respect the existing land use. I want us to take good care of it. There was very strong commentary from fire and rescue and our police saying, I think we have enough, you know, resources to protect this going forward. And I just want to make sure if we take on a project that we do have the resources, we have the protection in place, we're taking care of their home values appropriately, and I'm not sure I can say that we're doing it in this, in this situation. I do think that the timing is poor with what has gone on just recently with a very bad example of a hotel. It's kind of a poor taste. But having the police staff, the fire and rescue staff, is it inside our reasonable limits to be able to take on this additional project? And, and I will not be supporting the petition, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Who wants to speak for next? Mr. Rafferty.
Well, yeah, so I want to make a couple of comments. So I'm a professional custom home builder and a developer. I've done a lot of developments around the last 35 years in Roanoke County, and I looked at this property back in the late 80s when Bob Carlton owned it. And my dad and I looked at it, and we wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole, because we are not going to build Siegel family homes behind a parking ride. There's no way they're, they're not going to sell, and, and I'll stand to that today. I think that the townhouses are what we're looking for, for the diverse price tag. Mr. North mentioned about everybody moving away. Well, my son's got a college education. He's moved back to town, but he can't find anything affordable to live in. It, it's not there. It still might be hard for him to afford a $300 townhouse, but maybe he can rent one of them. I don't know. But when I look at that, that property, you know, I see the hotel as a, the townhouses as a, as a buffer for that hotel. To me, the hotel is a good transition from the parking ride to that space. And, you know, I hear the comment about, would you live behind that? So let me tell you what I've lived behind. I bought my first house in Columbus, Ohio, and it was behind a strip mall and a hotel. I bought the house for $86,000. The house today is worth $225,000, because I looked at it about a year ago for property values. The house, the value went up. I spec'd some homes over two years ago on View Avenue and Manassas Avenue. I bought a lot and split it in half, and the houses all around us were valued around $100 to $120,000. We put 325, two $325,000 homes there, and they sold them like that. So the value difference didn't matter if the, if the value was here or there. The value of the townhomes, to me, is not going to bring the value down. And, and the last thing about property values, I've got residents on Bent Mountain, and they've got a pipeline going through their backyard. Their values are not dropping. Their assessments went up. People are still buying up there. I'm showing them lots and houses up there. So if a pipeline is not knocking out their values, how's a, a hotel that's buffering with townhouses and a parking ride? So, you know, that's really hard for me to, to swallow. We don't know. I heard a comment that the market is still strong for expensive homes. Well, I've had four contracts for homes over 500 canceled because of the inflation, the lumber prices, and the interest rates have gone up. So the market is not still strong for expensive homes. I'm, I'm not seeing that right now. You know, the things I look at when I'm developing, like Mr. Boone, is I, you know, I'll look at, I'll look at my buffers, I'll look at the traffic, and I, and I worry about the stormwater. All those are handled in the development review process. They're, they're looked at, they're scrutinized. You might not believe the traffic study, you might not feel comfortable with the buffer, buffers, but we have to do them by the regulations. You know, we, we have standards that we have to, to develop by, and so those are put in place to protect everybody around the development. And I asked Mr. Boone about the HOA. Now, the HOA, I, I assume the residential behind, around it are, are HOAs also, but HOAs can be very strict, and, you know, they're, they're fussy about how the yards are capped, how the outside maintenance is kept up, the condition of the homes. They're really strict. So I would say that the HOA is going to help protect the, the quality of that town, the townhouse, and then if you put that, and if you wrap the hotel in there with a HOA master, they're going to have to live up to the letter of the law with those requirements. And, and I think Mr. Boone will be able to keep his thumb on that if he stays involved in that project. You know, I was around in the 70s when Knights Inn was built. It was a different motel then, and it was great. I grew up in North County, and that, that was a fantastic hotel. But over time, the wrong person owned it, and that's what happened. The wrong people got a hold of it, and now they're paying the price. That property will be redeveloped one day, it'll come back, but comparing that to what we're hearing tonight is really a leap, in my opinion. And that's my comments. Mr. Chair.
I, I see this as two issues, and I'm going to piggyback on some of the comments that Mr. North made. The hotel, to me, is a problem. And I will make a lot of people mad, because I think the original proposal that Mr. Boone had was a far greater benefit to the community than just the hotel. I think some of the, the doctor's offices or other commercial offices out front would have supported and benefited the neighborhood much more, but that's water over the bridge or under the bridge. With respect to the townhouses, I understand and I hear the concern. I'm in Cave Spring District. In Cave Spring District is Hunting Hills. I think Hunting Hills probably has some of the highest house values anywhere in Roanoke County. And in Hunting Hills, there are two different developments with townhouses in Hunting Hills, and it has not hurt the property values one bit, $1 in Hunting Hills. I even tried to buy one, and I couldn't afford it. I even tried to buy one, and I couldn't afford it. So I appreciate the fear that comes from that, but I truly don't see a detrimental effect of townhomes. And if this application was solely about townhomes, in my opinion, this would be a slam dunk. This is easy. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As has been mentioned earlier, Roanoke County was involved in a housing study a couple of years ago. We need a different diversity and mix of housing in our community, and as other board members have commented, it's a need, and we have to do that. I, I struggle with the traffic data that was handed out. I've heard different numbers thrown around about single-family homes that would, could be built or should be built, or Mr. Thomas would have built at some point in the past, whether it's 50 houses or 60 houses or 90 houses, whatever. To me, I'm, I don't understand how 50 or 60 single-family homes that'll generate X number of cars a day is okay, but 60 or 80 townhomes that generates Y number of vehicle trips a day is somehow bad or evil, that does not compute in my head. I think the traffic load is the same to me. Maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I don't see, I don't see a difference. And when I look at the plan that is before us for the townhomes, I see it protecting the Gish, was it Gish Creek?
Yes.
And that area in there, and I see that as a positive. So with respect to the townhomes, this, to me, is an easy vote. The problem for me is, is the hotel, because I see that as a problem for your community. I, I hear Mr. Thomas, and I hear Mr. Boone, and they talk about the difficulty of maybe putting any kind of house on what I call the front, you know, closest to the parking ride. And I, I appreciate the fact of being right at the parking ride, and right beyond the parking ride is the interstate. When my wife and I first moved to Roanoke County, we looked at several subdivisions, and our realtor showed me subdivisions that were beautiful homes, and they backed up to the interstate, and all you heard was the roar of traffic all the time. So I don't know if somebody would want to build a house there. That doesn't necessarily mean that a hotel is the, the better choice. So I, so I struggle with the, the hotel concept. I was particularly impressed by Lynn Bledsoe's information that she provided us with respect to the determination by the county in the past with respect to designating this area as core. That's not mandatory in my mind. It is a guide, but that guide leads us to certain conclusions. If you sit back and look at a map, it kind of makes sense from a planning perspective that you would have some kind of commercial use along a parking ride and near the interstate. And if you're going to, I think the last, one of the last speakers who talked about, where else would you put a hotel but right near the interstate exit? That makes sense. But I'm troubled. I'm troubled by the adverse impact that that has on the neighborhood, and that one, that one gives me heartburn. I know Mr. Boone builds good projects, and in my experience, when I look at, I used to be county attorney here, and we had a lot of problems with different developers in Roanoke County. We never had any problems with Boone, and we never had any problems with Radford. I could give you a list of some other developers that we've always had problems with, but those were two of the better developers. But, you know, whether or not Mr. Boone's a good guy or a bad guy, I can't look at that. That does not move me. I got to look at what, what is an appropriate land use for this property. And so with that, I'm kind of struggling. I, I cut off Mr. Peters, I'm sorry, Ms. Hooker, Mr. Peters.
So I was just going to say a couple of things. I wanted to follow up to what Supervisor Mahoney just said. I don't know that I made that clear enough, that I have a problem with the hotel also. I have less problem with the townhomes. I do think that that's an adequate buffer in between most of the neighborhood and the parking ride. And I also want to compliment the residents. You all have been very well educated. You've educated yourselves well. You've brought forth the arguments, I think, very well, and, and I really appreciate it. It helps us understand the concerns, and we look at it from a, you know, a study in a book, but you live it, and so I appreciate everything that you've done. I know that in the future land use map, when you just look at the paper from an academic, it looks like that could work, that there could be core there. Looking at it today, I struggle with it. I struggle with that component of the commercial, the hotel property going there right next to the residential. I, I struggle with that. So I'm right there with you, Mr. Mahoney, and appreciate your words.
May I get any further comments?
Okay.
Well, we've all spoken. Is there a motion on this ordinance?
I'm happy to take a stab at it, and then we can see where it takes us. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to deny. I find that the proposed rezoning request is inconsistent with the purpose and intent that the county's adopted comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, or will result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we deny the rezoning request as it has been requested.
Do we have a second to the motion? Hearing no second, motion dies. Do we have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I find that the proposed rezoning request is substantially consistent with the purpose and intent that the county's adopted comprehensive plan, that it is in good zoning practice, and will not result in substantial detriment to the county. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request as been requested with the following proper conditions. One, the site shall be developed in substantial performance with the Edge Brook Park Development Plan, Exhibit A, and Exhibit B prepared by Balzer and Associates. Balzer, Balzer and Associates, Inc., dated July the 8th, 2022, subject to changes required by the, by the County of Roanoke, Virginia Department of Transportation, and the Western Virginia Water Authority during the site plan review process. Two, that a maximum of 80 townhomes shall be constructed with this request. Thirdly, the allowable use for the commercial parcel shall be a hotel. And fourth, the proposed hotel shall be a maximum of four stories in height.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
No.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, Item Q, Citizen Comments and Communications. I have no items. Thank you. Item R on our agenda. I'll let folks leave. Reports and inquiries of board members. The first board member we have on our list is Mr. Radford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to report that we heard earlier today that I got to meet our new director of library, and we had a, a meeting with a group up at the Bent Mountain Library. They brought to our attention and have, have requested, and I'll bring more information to, to the fellow board members, but they would like to add an addition to that small library for program use. We did look at a conceptual plan that was developed back in 2004, 2005. It's a small space. They want to have, they want to add. Mr. Blunt with me, and we met up there for about an hour. So as I get more information from, from Mr. Blunt and what we collected, I'll, I'll be bringing that to the other, sharing that with the other board members to, to let you see what that's all, all about. Also, I want to thank everybody for keeping my dad in his prayers. He's probably gone to bed now, but he usually watches this, and Mr. North said he's got to be really sick if he's watching these board meetings, but...
Probably what caused it.
Yeah.
It did, yeah.
No, I appreciate it. He's, he's had some respiratory issues, and I think we're over the hill or past that point, and, and he's hopefully on the road to recovery, so we'll, we'll check up on him. But thank you so much for your prayers and consideration. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peters is next.
Mr. Chairman, I won't tie us up for any longer this evening. I have no comments.
Ms. Hooker.
Just a quick comment, that I attended the Virginia Career Works Leadership Meeting in Charlottesville yesterday, learned a lot about our local and state workforce percentages, discussed how to increase those numbers, had an opportunity to discuss specific issues in Roanoke County with the Virginia Secretary of Labor, Brian Slater. So thank you for your patience with changing the date of this meeting tonight. I appreciate that. Was pleased to attend a block party near my neighborhood on Ingle, and it was a first, and hope to look forward to more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. North.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. Tomorrow, we have a meeting at Bonzak Elementary on the 460 Challenger Avenue Land Use and Connectivity Study. It's the final community meeting running from 5:00 to 7:00. Excellent presentation online can be viewed, but also will be shared tomorrow beginning at 5:30. Several citizens have complimented on it was a great presentation, they can't be there. But I do also want to, as an aside, take this opportunity to thank staff for helping to arrange a part of this meeting. We'll have an easel set up with the plans for the byright construction of townhomes and apartments, so that those citizens that want to ask questions in person can attend and take benefit of folks there also from the developer, as well as development services, so that they can get answers to concerns and questions about schools, traffic, and what have you. I've tried to mitigate as much as I can. Everything's going to be all right at the end of the day. This is not as difficult as what we have gone through this evening, but I am optimistic that this, too, will be good for the community. So encourage those people to come out tomorrow night from the Bonzak Hunt Ridge area to get some answers. That's all.
Unfortunately, I have three items. The first item I want to promote is on October 8th, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30, there will be a triad meeting. Triad, it's a, it's an organization comprised of law enforcement, senior citizens, senior organizations who partner together to share information for how seniors can avoid becoming victims of crime and enhance the safety and quality of their lives. Our police department is very active in this. The Attorney General's Office promotes it. We have a flyer that I hope we can circulate to everybody. It's, they, they say it's going to be an event filled with food, fun, and education. So again, Saturday, October 8th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:30. It's going to be at the Roanoke Police Academy, which is right 5401B Barnes Avenue, right off...
Peters Creek.
Peters Creek.
Peters Creek, yes. The second item, I just want to report to everybody that Mr. Kaywood and I had an excellent lunch at Mission Barbecue with Mr. Stewart, the airport director, and I'm so very happy that the board agreed to put on our legislative program supporting the airport expansion. I think all of us realize how critical the airport is to our economic development and to our community. And if you read anything in the news media, because a lot of the major legacy airlines, they, they don't have enough pilots, they're pulling back from some of the smaller cities and smaller airports, that's, this is so critical to us to keep the airport here in Roanoke. Finally, just, I've spoken to a bunch of board members, just want to remind everybody, on October 25th, we have a very full agenda, but on the 25th, we will be meeting with the Roanoke County School Board and our Citizens Committee as part of the new Arnold L. Burton, the CTE program. The Citizens Committee is ready to give their report to us with respect to solar. They're also going to, I'm hoping the school board can also talk about the progress that they're making with respect to the due diligence of the site that we've looked at, and also I understand that the school board has also partnered with a local development organization. I won't mention their name because they get enough free advertising as it is, because they always show up here, and they're sitting here in our audience, and they're supposed to give us a concept plan and also some estimates of costs for the new CTE facility. So with that, who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, and the time is 10:25.
leak in Zarifa's house, which was found to have been caused deliberately. She still has the scars from the resulting fire. In February...